Brian, Councilmember Salvi gets sworn in.
Please raise your hand and speak after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Salvi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter of the City of Morris.
And the Charter of the City of Morris.
And will discharge faithfully.
And will discharge faithfully.
The duties devolving upon me.
The duties devolving upon me.
As council member.
As council member.
Of the City of Morris.
Of the City of Morris.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
I'll come back.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll have roll call vote, please, Ashley.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Delacan?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. All right, we have citizens' comments, I guess if anybody is in the audience would like to approach the council before we present, we have a presentation for Beth Hendricks, but if anybody else would like to come up and speak to the council, now would be a good time for that. Seeing none, okay, we will have, we have an award to our presentation for, to make for Beth Hendricks tonight.
So this is the way we're gonna do it, I'm gonna have the mayor actually give you the award, but I'm gonna read it first, Beth, so if you wanna come up, you can come up and stand in front of everybody while I'm reading it. And it's important to note that this award is not from me, it's not from the City of Morris, this award comes from the Minnesota Public Transit Association, which Beth is a member of that organization and they work together to provide transit in Minnesota, so. This award, 2022 Transit Professional of the Year Award nomination, Beth Heinrich. Beth Heinrich has been working in public transit for thirty-six years, working diligently to serve the City of Morris. She has dedicated her life to helping others and demonstrates an extraordinary commitment to improving the quality of life in her community. Beth does a little bit of everything, and she does everything well, including driving, dispatching, reporting, and training. She provides great customer service and she works tirelessly to integrate the transit system into the community. In fact, she considers her coworkers and customers to be her extended family. Beth is innovative and progressive, which are characteristics highlighted by her recent projects involving electric buses and a facility project. Beth is a kind, caring, and compassionate transit professional who is long overdue for this award, and this was actually written by one of the state people, so. Yeah, did you guys get your pictures in?
With a sign, get the sign in there.
Congratulations, Beth. And you're welcome to go, if you wanna go. Even, even if Beth makes you stay.
Thanks for coming. Okay, well, we have no public hearings tonight, so we will move on to reading and approval of the minutes from 1-3, the organizational meeting minutes. I guess we'll do that one first.
I'll approve the meetings from January third, the organizational meeting.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, carried. And then we have the December nineteenth work session meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the twelve nineteen work session minutes.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Carried. We have the consent agenda, which is, consists of the audit of city bills, gambling report, transit report, and we have an additional raffle permit for the St. Mary's School. I will approve all the items on the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to that, if anybody has a second on that.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda, was there any discussion on any of those items before we vote? Hearing none, okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Carried. Petitions, requests, and communications, again, we have none, so we will move right on to the ordinances and resolutions. We have an ordinance before you, number one eighteen, an ordinance vacating certain public right-of-way. Do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, so what we're looking for here, this is an ordinance, and so the first step in the ordinance process is to set the first reading. So what I'm looking for is a motion from the city council to allow the first reading of this ordinance and to set the second reading of the ordinance for February twenty-eighth at five twenty P M. Normally, we would do it at the next meeting, but because this is an ordinance that's vacating certain right-of-way property in Morris, it has to go through the planning commission, and in order to go through the planning commission, we have to give notice to anybody that's near that area, within three hundred and fifty feet of that area, which means that we have to do up the notices and send them out. We don't have the ability to do that prior to the planning commission meeting in January. And then they will give a recommendation back to the city council on, on what to do with this ordinance, and and so on the twenty-eighth, we would have the second reading, and we'd have another public input period before the city council would take it up for adoption. We talked about this a little bit last time, we met where the, the hospital needs to do some work expanding the emergency room. In order to do that, they have to do construction to basically the northeast, but there's a road there. And, and as of right now, all the property on the southeast part of that, that, that one block area we're talking about is owned by the hospital. All the property on the northeast side of that, that road right-of-way, that one block area is owned by the hospital except one lot. And they, they have been in communication with the owner of that lot, so basically what this is, is ordinance that would take, take away the, the road right-of-way from our control and then give the property back to the control of the, the property owners, and as I was looking at this issue before I brought it to you, I went back and looked at any other ordinances that we had done to do the same thing. The last one we did was for the courthouse. So, so you were around when the courthouse stuff got dealt with, and we actually eliminated a road that ran in front of the courthouse and part of an alley. And then prior to that, there's actually a road right-of-way that went, continued on on South Street to the northeast by the water tower, and when the new elementary school was built, that was converted to a driveway back in that area, so. So what I'm looking for is a motion from the city council to allow this first reading of the ordinance and to set the second reading for the twenty-eighth of February at five twenty P M.
I will make a motion to approve this ordinance, one eighteen, vacating the certain public right-of-way. I think that's, it's good for the hospital to expand, and it's, the hospital's great for the City of Morris, so I think we need to do all we can to help and facilitate these actions.
I will second, and I agree with Mr. Salvi, I think, yeah, if we have a, a growing hospital, things coming in, it, it keeps our community, I guess, alive and growing, hopefully. And as part of it here, I see any city infrastructure that needs to be moved or replaced will be part of the project and picked up by the hospital to take care of that.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, I, I failed to mention that, but there's two, two things in this ordinance, one is that it, it'll happen contingent upon them doing a building permit to do the project that they're talking about. So if for some reason they decide they're not gonna do it, then we wouldn't go through with the vacation. And the other one is there, there's some utility issues that have to be dealt with. I think the number one issue is the water line, which tends to be the easier one to do a relocate on, 'cause it's pressurized, but that's part of it.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second on that ordinance.
And this starts the process for the planning commission?
Yep.
And like you say, we have a tiller meeting on the twenty-eighth of February to gather the information, and if we come up with some, some reason not to, that this is just starting the process to look into it and study it.
Two, two really quick things, one is that the planning commission this month is actually gonna meet, and one of the things I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give them some background information on this, 'cause there's another issue that goes with this that the planning commission will be dealing with, and that's a variance, but that gives them a chance to kind of look at the information before we actually put it in front of them in February. The other thing is that, that there's nobody from the hospital here right now, but they don't need to be right now, but when the time comes, they will be here to be able to answer any questions that you're gonna have as to why they're doing this and, and why, why, why it's important to them.
I read somewhere their, their plans are to try to begin construction like spring on this project.
Yeah, they, they definitely wanna get going as soon as they can.
No further here.
Okay, no other further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Carried. All right, we have a resolution authorizing the purchase of an electric transit bus.
Yeah, and so then, what I, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I left blank the amount of the bus, and actually, we're still working with this, this is a very complicated, Griffin Peck was gonna be here tonight, then we decided that we're gonna move this resolution to the next meeting.
Yeah, we do.
But I wanted to make sure that we got you on record as knowing and understanding what, what we wanna do with this. It's really complicated, 'cause it's a federal grant that the State of Minnesota applied for and got, and then in turn, they're doing grants to us for this bus, and so then there's two state agencies that are involved with this, along with the state cooperative purchasing organization, that's how we're buying it, we're not taking bids on buses, we're buying it through the state cooperative purchasing. And the initial bus we looked at, they actually pulled their bid out of the state bid system, and now we're working with United. And there's one, one more issue they're trying to work out with regards to this bus, that's gonna work into the pricing, so what I'm gonna have you do is I'm gonna have you do the resolution allowing the purchase of the bus from United Bus Company, Big Lake, in an amount up to two hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And, and the reason for that is, that is the grant that we got from the State of Minnesota through this grant process. And so if for some reason it winds up being over that, then we'll probably have to come back and do something different, if it winds up being less than that, then we'll be okay. I think as of right now, it's gonna be less than what the grant amount was, based upon the discussion that we're looking at. So it's, it's very complicated how we deal with this, and, and yet at the same time, they, they want us to purchase, make this purchase by the end of January. And it still has to go through the state system to get the approvals to make that purchase, so. Any questions on that? It's exciting, 'cause we're gonna get a fully electric transit bus, and, and the, the, it's totally paid for by the state and federal government.
Yeah, I was glad to see that there, the supplemental heater is part of this package, I know the first bid person that we submitted a bid to didn't.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's the last little piece of this, they're trying to figure out how to it's just really complicated, 'cause the state bid system that they went through didn't have that in there, because the state people didn't realize that you needed, in, in cold weather, the, the school buses that we have at, at the Morris area schools, they have these little diesel heaters in them, and that's what we're gonna put in this transit bus, but it's not in the specs for the contract, and, and the last email I saw right before I came to this meeting was that the person at the state that's in charge of this is ninety-nine percent sure that they've got all the paperwork ready to go. But we haven't seen it yet, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing to have in this country. Any discussion on the resolution?
I'll, I'll make the motion authorizing the purchase of electric transit bus.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that resolution, we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please, Ashley.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Delacan?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Okay.
Mayor, before we move on, can, I think we should go back and take a roll call vote of the ordinance, one eighteen, we, we just did a.
It's just a motion.
That's just a motion, so we don't have to do that one?
It's, it's just a motion for the first reading.
The regular ordinance, then we have to do it.
When it comes back on the twenty-eighth, that'll be a, an adoption of it.
Okay. That's good, I'm fine with that, then.
Yep.
Okay. City manager's newsletter.
Yeah, I think, I think I'll just throw out a couple of comments and then answer any questions you might have, obviously, the legislature's in session now, and it's DFL-controlled, and we, we, if you watch the news, you can see already that things are starting to happen. The one thing I noted in here that the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities had, had noted in their newsletter that came out that the governor was at the State Chamber of Commerce banquet and was talking about his priorities in the state budget, and one of the comments he made was he's gonna put a significant increase in local government aid, and we had talked about that before when we're looking at the budgets, it's our number one funding source, and and any, any significant increase in local government aid would send money our way, depending on how they distribute it. But we're watching it really close, there's legislative session, conference coming up here in, in two weeks, and I'm gonna go down get a chance to talk with our representatives and then find out more about what's happening in the legislature, but they have the votes they need to be able to do what they wanna do, and, and you're gonna start seeing things being done. So it's gonna be interesting to see what trickles down to us as far as things that we have to deal with. And then I did have a call yesterday from MPCA about our compliance letter that, that we got from them, and, and we sent them back all the stuff they needed, and they're good with it, so. We're in good standing with them on, with regards to our stormwater permit for, for this last go-around, and and then we just started, you know, we started a new budget year, so, so we're busy working on all, all different kinds of things, the park board's gonna meet tomorrow morning, talk about some park stuff, and, and then we'll go from there, if you got any questions.
In our, in our January budget work session, do we, there'll be itinerary or, or agenda for it, correct?
There, there will be, yeah, for the work session.
And, and I think that, okay, we're gonna talk about the street project discussion, other organizational. So, a lot of things that we can, do we have to keep it strictly to the agenda, or we can talk about some other things there?
I think you should identify what you're gonna be.
We wanna, if there's things that we specifically wanna talk about, we need to get that on your agenda with you, okay?
I think one of the, you know, one of the things that, you know, I think would be good is to just have kind of a general overview of city government and, and how it works, and, and obviously, we have, we have some engineering things that, that we're dealing with now, with, you know, even East First Street and, and East Seventh Street, but if you have suggestions for what to put on that, you could bring them up at the twenty-fourth meeting. And then the big thing is to let the public know, you know, what you, what you're gonna be talking about when.
Right, that's what, that's kinda what I, you know, when we do these, I wanna make sure that we, we knew we had a specific, if there's anything that you wanted to discuss in it, we get it on the agenda, we get it out there.
The, the big thing is you're not allowed to make any decisions.
Right.
So it's just simply talk, which is what we talked about doing.
Mm-hmm. All right.
I see we towed eight vehicles in the last, and that really was up a little bit from the last go-around, but still not all that bad.
Yeah, no, and part of that was, we just have a lot of snow. You know, I think with the snow building up, you know, we've, we've talked to a couple people that there's some confusion with one of the apartment building owners that had told their people not to park in the parking lot, 'cause it was gonna be cleared. And so they parked in the street. And it's, it's like, no, you know, they have, they, they have to have your parking lot open for you. You know, so that you can park, and then we'll, we'll get our stuff done, and they can get their stuff, and then there's a couple people that couldn't get into their spaces. You know, just because of the buildup of the snow and everything, and, but you know, for the most part, it, it's been going really smoothly, and there's a good system set up to where you know, if we're not open and you can't come in and pay us, then you can go up to the dispatch and pay them, and then the, the law enforcement will come and open the gate, 'cause we do have a lock gate now, which we never had before, so they'll come up, open the lock gate so you can get your vehicle out.
Alternative parking, university still have a lot where somebody can park as far as a student, are you aware of, Blaine?
Yeah, I, I think that's where Griffin parked.
And as far as.
Did he, no, his neighbor let him park there.
The city, do we have a spot at fairgrounds, is there any spot for somebody to park if they don't?
We don't, we don't really have a designated spot.
Okay, I'm just curious to, if we did, to let people know?
Yeah.
To try to, to accommodate?
Yeah, 'cause it's like, well, we had one individual, Griffin, our, our sustainability, he actually went to his neighbor and said, you know, I noticed nobody's living in this spot, can I park in here, and they said, yeah. So that worked out pretty good, but I think the university's still open, and, and quite frankly, we didn't, I don't think we got hardly a call on where to park. You know, so it's, very few cars are troublesome, and then very few people are, you know, questioning what's going on. I think we had one person that was from out of town that, for whatever reason, didn't know what was going on.
I seen out by Eagles Ballpark, that, that field, that little triangle chunk there, that, is that owned by Bill and Trees the Game, isn't it? That, that, that pasture kinda like there? I seen they were pushing snow back, is that our guys that did that, pushed all that snow way back? I don't know who did that, but they, if you have, have you been by Eagles Ballpark lately? Somebody was in there with a payloader and pushed it way back, so I, I would, I would assume it wasn't our guys, but somebody was doing it, I suppose, just to keep it from drifting over the street, or not sure what the intent was there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know who would've done that.
It's good, though, I think whoever did it, it's a good idea.
They can have a lot of winter yet, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. All right, anything else on the city manager's newsletter? All right, we will move on, we have a vacancy to discuss. I guess what, what I'd like to do, just turn it over to the council for discussion. We had some discussion last week, of course, in Ryan's absence, but.
And I know that I kinda said that it'd be nice if so, if those interested parties would contact us, and we did have somebody that contacted all of us, so, show interest. One more person that contacted all of us, otherwise I have not heard from anybody else.
Are we, is this a forum here where we're gonna nominate somebody, or at this point in time?
You can.
About doing something, or just expressing your views?
Thirty days from the notice of when it was vacated, so technically, I guess we have our next meeting to do it, I guess.
I think as far as process, it's a matter of motion being put on the table to fill the vacancy. No matter when you do it, if it's now, next, next meeting, whatever, but that's, that's what it would take. That, that's what it would take, is a motion by the city council to fill the vacancy and then a vote on it.
A motion with the person's name to fill the vacancy, yes, correct?
Right.
I see we have a couple brave souls in attendance, thank you for coming. I think everybody knows Zach and Adam. Appreciate you coming.
Well, I mean, I, I, I guess I don't know if we're gonna, anybody's gonna make a motion tonight or not, but I just, my, you know, kinda my thought process too, is that I mean, the, the election has been over for quite some time, and so, and we've heard just maybe one person lately that showed some interest, so. And, and that's just a long time, I, I think the people that were actively involved in the process, that were interested before the election and, and all that, I feel are, are ahead of the game. That, you know, you're, you're the one that showed up, you showed the interest, you took, you took it out to get involved. It means you wanted to be involved, not just after the fact, oh, there's an opening, let me jump on that, so. From my standpoint, I think it has to be one of the two. That's, that's kinda where I'm coming from, and what my thought process, I don't know if I'm gonna do anything here, it's just the evening, but, where everybody can kinda think about it a little bit, or, or whatever, but I just thought I'd put that out there.
I agree, Ryan, I think we're ready to go, I mean, this is, the election was November, we've all known, Blaine's talked about it, what we need to do, we talked about it last time, we decided to wait till you were here. Like I said, we had two candidates who ran, both showing interest, one reached out after I asked if somebody kinda let us know if they're interested, let everybody know, so I think I'd like to go ahead and move on this, so that person can get settled in and start attending some of our meetings, so I'd like to make a motion to fill the vacancy and nominate Zach Crolls.
I would second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, I don't have any, do you?
No. I guess as a, you know, newly elected mayor, I respect your opinions and your position, and I guess we'll just have, put it to a vote. We have a motion and a second to nominate Zachary Crolls to fill the two-year vacancy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion carried.
Congratulations, Zach. Welcome, thank you for your participation.
Both of you, thank you.
Yes, it's good to have people.
Yes, absolutely.
And in two years, like, don't be afraid, yes, you've, you've experienced some of the stuff, and thanks for your interest, it's just, and we'll see where things are in two years.
So, thank you both.
So, if you want, now you've selected a, a person to fill it, if you want, what we can do is we can have the city attorney swear Zach in, if you wanna be sworn in tonight and take your seat.
Do we need to do a background check? If you're gay, my son. I think that's a great idea.
Unless he wants to.
Unless you wanna wait until next meeting.
Yeah, you can, I'm sure he waits.
You mean, you can wait till the next meeting and do it just? You mean, seriously, I mean, you can wait till the next meeting and do it just like I did.
Face the camera, please.
Aye, Zach Curls. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And of the state of Minnesota. And of the state of Minnesota. And the Charter of the City of Morris. And of the Charter of the, the City of Morris. And will discharge faithfully. And will discharge faithfully. The duties devolving upon me. The duties devolving upon me. As a council member. As a council member. Of the City of Morris. Of the City of Morris. To the best of my judgment and ability. The best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations. You're welcome, yes, thank you.
Well, congratulations, Zach.
Congrats.
Have your seat.
Now I can put you to work.
You have to suit him up with a tablet, I suppose, there.
Blaine, right? Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we'll have to, uh, I think Sheldon turned in, is right? Yeah, so we'll get that all taken care of and a bunch of other stuff.
Okay, well now we have, uh, now that we have a full, full team, we can work on filling our ex officio appointments. We had a little bit of discussion about this last meeting. Uh, there was a couple of uh, well, a couple of immediate changes that we made. Uh, I was gonna step away from tourism. Uh, Kim indicated that she was gonna take that from me and I was gonna uh, take Sheldon's SCIC appointment. And you did check on that, but.
Uh, yeah, did I send you?
I just wanted to make sure.
He had a question about whether or not there'd be a conflict interest since his brother's on the SCIC too, but.
Oh, I don't think so, is it?
I didn't think so, but I just wanted.
Cause it doesn't affect you personally.
Right.
And.
Just wanted to make sure.
You probably disagree with him anyway.
I was gonna say, is it like, is it like you're gonna be, we're separating you because you're gonna be fighting or is it just?
Take him in the corner like I did when he was a kid.
Could be fun.
It went the other way, I think, most of the time, though, but. Um, other than that, I think uh, any interest on, I think Jeff, you indicated some things on where your interests lie and where you'd like to go. And Brian, I guess you were the, you were the unknown there, uh, you're currently on uh, the RFC board and the, is it?
Community Ed.
Yeah.
Community Ed board?
Yeah, uh, Community Ed, um, you know, I, I personally like to stay where I'm at. I mean, just the longevity and, and knowing that, I think it helps whoever's on there to, you know, new members that come on or, or whoever's running, you know, it's, it, I think I, it helps me know what their program is and do everything, so. And I'm, and I'm a little, they like to meet at some different times, so I'm a little more available.
Okay.
And I think, Brian, what we talked about too, and that's fine, cause it was kinda thrown out, but kinda going forward, the only, what, what we've said, what I thought was that the only way somebody gets on a board is if somebody leaves and then they're appointed to the same position. So we talked about me, as we go forward, maybe switching it up, giving up one, keeping one and kinda revolving, so that we all get a chance to also. I mean, I get the longevity part of it, cause that's important too. But that's why maybe, like I said, we're, it's fine, um, but maybe to think about as we go forward that, you know, to think about which one, that was kinda throwing us all under there at last minute.
That's true, I mean, well, maybe.
No, I don't mean to, you have to, no.
No, I mean, I, I don't, I don't mind that either, I mean, maybe we need to, maybe we need to just table it and think about which one you'd like to give up or, or be on something different. I, I don't, I guess I don't have a real big problem with that.
And it, and you're right, some of them were the timing of them, cause not everybody can make a.
Summer at noon, summer at eight in the morning, yeah. What works with somebody that's working a full-time job, if you're, have an employer to take off and do that. I guess when I was working, that was an issue for me to find something that met in the five o'clock in the evening, so.
Yeah, both, well, like my RFC one meets at noon. Uh, the, the Community Ed meets basically at noon or ten thirty or eleven. I mean, it seems like it gets changed all the time, but it's, it's typically in those, that, that timeframe. Uh, so, different, different things don't bother me, I mean, I can make basically any time. So if anybody wanted to slide into that spot or could handle that timeframe.
I, uh, along with that, Brian, we talked about, and City Manager Hill and I talked about it too, that we would add in our regular agenda format, just an opportunity for the council representatives to have a board report. So as we turn these, you know, board assignments around, just somewhere right before we close the meeting, just give the council representatives an opportunity. If they got something that's going on in one of their respective boards, just give them an opportunity to give the council a quick update. Um, the board just, that, that I was interested in, just for your information, was I was gonna take over the West Central Initiatives Board and I think they meet in Fergus, that was, Sheldon had that and I was willing to take that on. And I, I just felt that it was important for the mayor to be in the chamber. Yet I had been on the chamber board for, since I've been on the council and I just think it's important for the mayor to have his ear to the ground with regards to the little main street and, not that we could probably manage it another way if, if, if maybe Zachary, for example, wants to take it. As long as, as long as we're communicating on, you know, what's going on in each of our respective boards, I don't have a problem at all stepping away from that too. But uh, the only other board that we would have, uh, Kim, were you still planning to stay on the airport board? If you took on the tourism?
No, I'd probably give up the planning and the airport.
Okay.
And I've talked about that, if, something that I haven't done, but I've been on the planning, I've served West Central Initiative, but I'm flexible to, to bounce around too, being semi-retired, I can make most throughout the daytime work, so.
I, I mean, I'd be interested in the SC EIC board. If nobody wanted to, you know, if I, I'd give up either one of the ones I had, uh, I would take that on, that wouldn't bother me at all.
How about the?
Seems interesting.
The newest member, anything in particular, Zach, that catches your eye or you'd like to take part on?
You know, to be honest with you, you know, working a full-time job, I start seven to five, so I can make noon meetings work and I can make five work and if I have to, you know, take an hour here or there.
Planning Commission, you planning on staying on yet? I mean, that normally meets at five, Planning Commission work for you? I mean, that would, that's one that I chose, just being that it was at five o'clock or five fifteen, that it works after work, so.
I guess, Brian, I would like to stay on, I'd like to be on that SCIC board if I could for this year. Uh, as a mayor, you know, newly elected mayor, I've never been on that board and I, again, I think it's important for the mayor to have a pulse and some of the, the goings-on with local businesses and developments, things of that nature. So I, I would take on three if, if that's okay with the council, but.
Totally fine, Park, I'm, and if you wanna be on the airport, don't make, I mean, uh, if I stay on my Park, I'm content there. If you wanna do Airport, I'm.
No, I'm, I'm not at all interested in that one.
Which one, the Park or the Airport?
I'd be in the Park, but I'm not interested in the Airport, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm talking that you were.
No.
I'm very content on. Are you still on?
Yes, I'm on, I'm, I'm still on uh.
RFC.
RFC and the Community Ed.
And I've been on just the Park, I'll take Airport, that'll give me two.
Okay.
If that's okay with.
I think that's excellent.
What do we got left?
I'll keep my two, I'm fine with that.
I'm not sure we have anything left.
Tree Board?
Oh yeah, Tree Board, how could we forget that? They usually meet in the evenings, don't they?
Yep.
That would be a good one for Mr. Zachary. That would work probably with your work schedule.
Yeah.
Wednesday at five, third Wednesday at five.
Yep, we're not sure changing you now, are we?
Who's on the, then I'll, who's on the airport then? That one never meets, to be honest.
Yeah, the Airport hardly ever meets. The Planning Commission is actually a very busy one, you know, as far as, if, if stuff comes up, like now we got some issues that are gonna go to the Planning Commission, it, it gets, that's a very complicated and important one to be part of, but.
But Zach's took that, Zach's on that one, I'm fine just being on.
You could have the Airport yet, or, I wanna short change you.
Or you could put Zach on the Airport.
Yeah.
Can you make that meeting, what time is the air?
Well, they typically, they would meet, meet at noon if they're gonna meet.
Yeah, that.
Okay.
That's usually, and then we meet out at the Airport, so usually is what we do.
Zach would have the Tree Board and then the Airport Board?
Might just be the picture when the Airport's completed.
You got it all, Blaine?
Uh, well, let's just go, so we got Park Board's still Miller, RFC's still Solvy, Planning Commission was Curls, SCIC is Waller's, Airport is Curls, Community Ed is Solvy, Tourism Board is Gullikson, Chamber of Commerce, Waller's, West Central Initiative is Waller's, and then who is Tree Board?
Zach.
Curls.
Curls.
That's probably the, the one that'll meet on a, a regular basis.
I don't wanna overload him, I think I'm gonna, if you don't mind, take that Airport off his shoulders.
Yep, that's fine.
That'll give me two and him two, get him broke in slowly and then next year will.
Load me up.
And I, and just, just so you know, I'll get a chance to sit, I'll, I'll talk to you afterwards, but we'll get together and I'll kinda give you a crash course and what's going on, plus the League of Minnesota Cities has some elected official training that, that would be good to go to, so.
So does that just leave you one then? Kim, you on anymore?
I'm fine. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, there you go, that's how to dress it up.
We could delegate you to go to like a county commissioner meeting like once a month, just to stay on top of what's going on there.
If you absolutely want chamber, I could.
No.
No, we're good.
Okay, so we have, everybody's got a hole, we know where everybody's gonna be.
Yeah.
Uh, just so you know, Zach, just a little history on how we're, um, how this, these little extra appointments and meetings go. We used to, when I first started, get a, we used to get like a ten dollar per diem, uh, per meeting, stipend, whatever. And we voted uh, quite a few years ago, just to eliminate that little ten dollar thing and we gave ourselves like a fifty dollar raise at that point, I think it was, and that's.
Annual.
Annual, yep, so, that's kinda how, that's the little background on that, so if you were looking for a little extra check, probably won't get it.
Don't submit anything.
Shoot.
All right, so we have good discussion, uh, I guess all we'll need is a, a motion and a second and we can move on.
I'll make the motion to accept the appointments as stated.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carry it. All right. Uh, board member updates. Think you have that in front of you?
Yeah, I don't think we've had any board meetings. Um, that's, that's one that you talked about, where uh, putting it on the agenda, so that when that comes up on the city council agenda, if you had a board meeting, like Park Board's meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay, that's what.
And you had some information that you wanted to share with the city council, that's the time.
That's the place for it, okay.
Oh, okay.
Uh, in the past, I've put information in the city manager newsletter, but um, I'll just work with you to figure out what you wanna do. But if you have something that comes up in one of your board meetings, that's the time to.
And some of the different boards, there are minutes that are presented to us. Normally they're a month or two behind in time, so to keep us up to date, if there is something that's being discussed, it's just nice to, to keep us up to date.
Chamber Board meeting, our annual Chamber Board ban, banquet is coming up on the twenty-fifth. That's gonna be at Old Number One, if anybody would care to, to uh, attend, you're welcome.
Don't you have to be a chamber?
Pardon?
Don't you have to be a chamber member?
Um, yeah, I, I don't know that's necessarily a.
I, yeah, I think other people are invited to it. I think as long as you pay for your meal or whatever.
Charge, they'll, they'll have a, I think it's like twenty-five or thirty, the proceeds from the banquet.
I think the liquor store's a member of the Chamber, aren't they?
Yep.
Yeah, so, just represent the liquor store.
They have door prizes and silent auctions and all that kinda stuff, so all the proceeds go to the Chamber, of course, so it's a fun night. Anything else from any of the other boards that you're on that you'd like to share or are we good or? No? Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none? I shall close the meeting.